Thank you, Dr. McNeely. So I'd like to start with just two announcements. Since it's a public meeting, I wanted to address some items that were presented yesterday. First off, I know we've spent a lot of time discussing the mask policy, and we did have some individuals who attended the meeting yesterday and they were not wearing masks that are appropriate for the school facilities because they were mesh. So I just want to remind people for future board meetings that we require you to have a cloth mask or a mask that aligns with the policy. They cannot have venting. And we will be following this at the next board meeting, so people need to understand that. The other topic that came up at yesterday's board meeting was right at the end, I discussed the renaming of school facilities. I was hoping to start the process for renaming this building because currently it is the building with no name. And the Sydney Air Center, Mr. Hyatt brought up a point about there was something he remembered in the fall regarding having a committee to prioritize buildings to be named. And actually, we looked at the policy. We do not have this in our policy, and so it's a recommendation from the superintendent to start the renaming process. One of the reasons I'd like to press this is that because of the public feedback component, there's like a 45-day window, and so I would like to get this started sooner as opposed to later. Honestly, it would be my goal to work on addressing the schools that we know we want to already address about renaming and have that finalized. All of the schools throughout the district by August 22, when we have the reimagining launch. So the sooner we can start, the better in my mind. So I just wanted to bring that to you all as well. Obviously, I know we have two current board members who are not here, so I'll follow through on an email. But essentially, this is just notification. I'll send you the policy, and I will need two nominations for each of the buildings that we're discussing. And that is all. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Simon. Certainly, it's clear to what you just stated. Dr. Paulson?
Yeah, so how it works for each building, because the composition of the committees, you needed to have a staff member and a PTA and PTO. So for this building, we want to choose, obviously, we don't have a staff here and a PTO, but we'll find our way to work through that on this level, and I'll propose some solutions to that. But for like the person who are near center, there was only two nominees, major school members, and then there's other components of that committee that I mentioned, and then there's the bond back. So on the policy, there are two board members, or two members from the center, one PTA or PTO member, the current staff member, two current educators. One knows PTA and one does not. Two current educators support professional earnings, two of the PTA, one does not. The local chairman, the elected president, as you described, the supervisor, the chief, and the principal or secretary.
Ms. Nguyen, educational plant five-year survey.
Great. Hi. I'm Dr. McNeely, Chairman, Chairwoman McNeely, Board Members, and Superintendent Simon is in line. Testing, testing. 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 No.
It's on. It's just that it's about a feedback.
I don't think that's feedback.
Huh? I hear some feedback. Something. Like the way.
Can you hear me now? Great.
A little better. I don't know about the citizens outside and on the online.
Good afternoon, Chairwoman McNeely, Board Members, and Dr. Simon. My name is Suzanne Nguyen. I am the Director of Community Planning and Facilities. I'm here to present the five-year educational plant survey to you. I wanted to workshop this, so you had an opportunity to ask questions. You'll see this on the consent agenda, on the May 18 board agenda, and this is something that happens once every five years. This is standard operating procedure. It's something that must be submitted to the Department of Education every five years. I want to emphasize that the education plant survey is permissive, not prescriptive. So just because something is in the plant survey doesn't mean that we are doing it or have to do it. It gives us permission to do it. If there's something not in the plant survey that we choose to do in the next five years, we can submit a spot survey, which we have done for some of our school, our current school projects. The plant, we need a plant survey to demolish buildings in addition to the DOE-approved custaldees. We need the plant survey to sell property and to change grade levels at schools. So at this time, I would like to introduce Fran Pickett. She is a consultant that we have hired to work on this survey. She is a State of Florida certified minority woman-owned business, and she owns Fran Pickett and Associates. Fran?
Good afternoon. I appreciate the opportunity to be here. I've worked all around Elachua County over the past 20 years doing surveys, but I've never worked in Elachua. You're the most northern county I've been in. A few introductory comments about who I am. I have a master's degree in architecture from Tulane University. But I didn't practice prior to having my children, and then in 1994, I was elected to the Brevard County School Board. So I sat in your seat, and all of a sudden, I started realizing how the architecture combined with the regulatory issues became a little niche that I pursued when I was off the school board. So I started Fran Pickett Associates in 1998, and my core business is educational plant surveys and anything fishy. And what I mean by that is if you know the Florida inventory of school houses is the database that's maintained by the state to put all of your schools in it. You could do a query and tell you how many square feet of janitor's closets you have if you're ever interested. But anyway, anything that relates to the database and to the rules and regulations around that. I've completed nearly 50 educational plant surveys, and you can see the green dots on the slide to see where they are. So according to the statutes, it's a systematic study of educational and employer plan and a determination of future needs to provide an appropriate educational program and services for each student based on the capital outlay FTEs provided by the Department of Education. Every word in there has some significance about the reason you do what you do. But as Suzanne mentioned, it is a permissive, not a prescriptive document. And this is important because before House Senate Bill 7070 passed three years ago, your sales tax money and your impact fees and local bond referendums were the only thing that were exempt from regulation by the survey. But they all of a sudden let you now spend your property tax money. So in essence, today, the only thing that isn't regulated by the plant survey is a small pot of money called your capital outlay and debt service, CONDS money. So basically, this document really only regulates what you can spend your CONDS on as far as the expenditure of funds. It must be submitted every five years, but if you want to, you can do the whole thing again every year if you want to. It authorizes the expenditure of state funds. It's based on FISH, and it must utilize the state projections. And this is where most districts say, why can't we build a new school? And why doesn't the survey show a new school? The survey has to be based on capital outlay FTE. That means that they're expecting every school in your district to be full and show that you still have need before they're going to authorize new facilities. And full means two empty classrooms can be left. So that's going to be the document that we have to deal with when we have to show the state that we have enough seats. So the capital outlay FTE is going to show that we have at least enough seats. That's pretty much how you get it approved. And if you don't, then you can add classrooms. So I want to mention state funds. The sources of funds on the left-hand column, CONDS and PICO funds require survey recommendations. And at the very bottom, other state funds, and I put hypothetical because it's been many years since there've been any state funds for facilities. Probably classroom for kids or the class size amendment money when they first did that. That's the last time they had a special allocation for that. Other than that, you can spend your money on whatever you want to as long as it's spent in your district according to whatever the rules of those funds are, but they don't have to be in the survey. The CONDS right now is the only source of funds you currently receive. The PICO funds mostly go to colleges and universities, and they go to charter schools. So those CONDS funds are the only ones that you're currently receiving that require survey approval. And a lot of people said, why don't we just change the statute and get rid of all of them? Well, CONDS funds happen to be mentioned in the Constitution as well, so it's a little tricky. So right now, just keep in mind that if you're not spending CONDS money, you can build pretty much whatever you want. As far as COFTI, I did a little analysis on your current FISH student stations. You can see that you have just above about 30, 31,000 student stations total, of which 2,885 are right now relocatables. And then because a school's capacity is different, if you're in elementary, middle, or high school, there's something they call a capacity factor. So for instance, in a middle school, the capacity is 90% of the student station's equal capacity. The elementary schools, 100% of the student stations equal capacity, and the high schools vary according to the size of the school. So according to FISH, you have just about the right number of seats for the projected COFTI, and this is the projections for five years out. So your projection for five years out, according to the State of Florida, is 26,869 students. Keep in mind, this does not include VPK because those don't count as COFTI. It does not include charter schools. It does not include hospital homebound or juvenile justice students that have to be educated. It's only children that need a full-time seat in your schools. So really, according to the DOE, they think that you just about have the right number, and if you took away the portables, you would probably have about two empty classrooms at every school and just be at capacity for the district. So you're not going to see a lot of recommendations for new schools in the survey because according to the state, if you were to readistrict evenly all the way across Elachua County, you would just about have the right number of seats. But we all know that doesn't happen, and it's hard to bring the kids from the south part of the county to the north, to the east, to the west, all to balance it all out.
Can I ask a question? Yeah, I thought about when I was reading it this morning. Are they predicting it has to lose students, or am I missing something here?
Well, if you go to the next slide, the next one does show where the, it's the next one I just clicked on, shows where you were actually versus the future. They're predicting that at the high school level, you're going to be growing over the next five years. Elementary, they believe that you're going to be declining. That's the DOE.
Wonder how they got that?
It's based on information sent to them by the district, and that has to do with actual kids that showed up on the certain counts. And I'd have to get into the statutes to go to the dates.
Are they using this last two years?
It's the last, it's a rolling average of the last five years.
But this last two years could have really affected us.
Well, the last two years are included, so it'd be the rolling.
Yeah, I mean, that could be a major input.
Yes, and that's why some districts choose to do their surveys sooner than five years. Because once you do your survey, these are the numbers that you would use for every spot survey from here on out. So if you have a huge spike next year and the year after, and you know you need a school and you need to spend some regulated money on it, then it's wise to go ahead and redo the whole survey. Because if I did a spot survey for you next year, I have to use the same projections that I used when I did the whole survey. The only way to bring in the new numbers is to open a whole new survey. So it's, that's why I keep emphasizing that it's only the CODS money that matters. And the CODS money is usually used for things that are considered district-wide recommendations. I think I have a slide on that.
So we're better off with these low numbers?
With the low numbers? Depends on what you're talking.
If we want to use the CODS?
Let me, if you don't mind, let me.
No, I'm glad. It just got my attention a couple hours ago.
Yeah, and it's, it's actually, they don't, they believe that high school is the only thing, only area you're going to grow, and it has to do with your demographics. The only way you can get them to change their mind is there about, there's about a three-week period in between about the first of June and the third week of June, where you look at this and you say, this isn't right, and you can have your, you can have Suzanne pull up all your housing starts, new subdivisions, all the growth that they might not have captured because of birth rates and whatever their information about growth.
Charter schools?
And what?
Charter schools.
Charter schools are not part of this.
Oh, okay. I just wanted, because they wouldn't be part of it.
Right.
But if, but maybe they think our charter schools are going to grow.
Yeah, they might be. I mean, that's, but they, they're going on trend lines, and it's based off the FTE reports that are sent to the state from your district. So they don't make them up. They take the birth rate information, and they take your data and any other additional data. For instance, if there was something that popped up next month, let's say some subdivision had 500 housing starts or a new apartment complex. The facilities department or the superintendent could send that data to the person at DOE who does this. Once in a while, they'll raise them, but mostly, they'll say, oh, we already account for that. It's very, very difficult. Sometimes it becomes kind of political game because then they can say, oh, we gave you X number of million dollars per pupil in Florida, but their COFTI numbers are lower than what yours are actually going to be. But they also end up being very close. People are always surprised that these numbers actually come out very close to what this DOE predicted, for whatever reason. They tend to be pretty close.
I know. Because Elachua County has grown a pretty good amount in the last six, seven years.
Well, that's probably reflected in this little peak up in high school students. They probably think they'll matriculate up.
Or because of professors coming.
Because of what?
For the university hiring professors and teachers, and they have older here. All right, I appreciate it.
Okay. So at the end of the day, after comparing your COFTI to your actual student stations, which I covered in the previous slide, we are able to fit in to the survey your new elementary I, new classrooms at Idlewild, Joseph Williams, Littlewood, Newbury Elementary, Metcalf, Howard Bishop, and Westwood. There are some other classrooms you'll probably be building, but you won't be using CODS money for that. So we have some renovations and remodeling in the survey, and those come straight out of your work plan. And you revisit the work plan every single September, and that is a financially feasible plan. This is just a permissive plan. It says, if you wanted to, you could add some square footage here and do this and that. But you could get, you'd have permission to use money for that, but you don't have the money to do it. I used to talk, say, it's like going into a restaurant, opening the menu, because on the menu, you can order it. If it's not on the menu, you can't order it. But you can't order everything on the menu because you couldn't eat that much, or you couldn't, you don't have enough money for that. So that's what the survey's supposed to cover. However, now that they withdrew the reasoning, I mean, the requirement that property taxes are regulated, that's no longer in here. So your property taxes and all your other funding sources that you use are not regulated by this survey, so you can use them on whatever you want. We have grade configuration changes at the following schools, Oakview, Newbury Elementary, Elachua, Herby, Rollins, and Metcalf. Those are the basic things that needed to be approved here. We also have recommendations for the closure of To Williger. And new and carryforward custalde recommendations. That's one little niche that the survey requires. And you have, you will probably get a survey amendment over the next five years because when you approve a custalde, which is the building replacement study to get permission to tear down a building, because of the statutes, the disposition of property has to be in the survey. So you'll get a survey amendment if they get permission. So you'll get a survey amendment if they get permission to tear down a building at a school that you're trying to upgrade. You'll get some of those over the next five years because that's required for the survey. I want to mention real quick here, Howard Bishop and Idlewild were not included in this plant survey because they, the buildings have already been demolished. We had the custaldi, the buildings have been demolished and they've already been removed from FISH. That's why they're not included in this plant survey. And those were also given to you in a spot survey since the last five-year survey was done. You may recall getting a spot survey for the demolition of buildings. And so those are already gone, so we didn't have to carry forward those recommendations. But if you do a spot survey to tear down a school, and by the time the next survey doesn't come along, you have to carry forward that recommendation to say, okay, we've got permission, but we haven't torn it down yet. So when you look at our capacity, don't count that. So that's basically what happens.
Ms. Pickett, I have a question. On the previous slide, I was trying to get your attention before you pulled it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Those recommendations about school I and the new classrooms, are those carry forwards from the last time the survey was done? That wasn't, that's not in the work that you were doing now, correct? Or is that?
Suzanne, might you help me out? Which ones are carry forwards? Some of them are carry forward, and I believe a couple of them are new based on the closing of To Williger. Most of these are carry forwards, Ms. Certain, and like Ms. Pickett has mentioned, as we're going forward with our re-zoning and revisioning and potentially upgrading, changing our plan with our facilities, then we will look at changing, you know, basically what our projects are. This, these projects carried forward from what we had previously planned to do. This is permissive, not prescriptive. We don't have to do this. So not knowing what the future plan is, we carry the past forward. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I was just trying to, to, to understand because there's the, Idlewild was already in process, I is already in process. So I was just trying to figure out why was it here now? That's, that's what I didn't understand. And I don't recall us doing a survey since I've been on the board. I recall the work plan update that we've gotten, like I went back through my files, but I don't recall the survey. So I was just trying to make sure I was understanding the flow of where we are and where we want to be. That's what I'm trying to get at. So I guess.
So we had a previous plant survey, and then we, we did a spot survey to be able to do the work that's under construction now. And the work that's not completed has been carried forward as well as what the future projects that were projected were.
Do you recall the data of the previous survey, this previous spot survey? I'm just asking from my own.
I don't, but I can get that information to you.
I was just wondering, because I don't recall it, and I'm just trying to sit down. So that's fine.
The other thing is at the bottom, the last bullet is identifying core facilities that could be expanded. One of the bits of analyses I did was if you, let's say, added a classroom wing to an elementary school some year in the past, but you never enlarged their cafeteria, I went through and calculated what you would be allowed to add on to a school to bring it up so that you wouldn't have four lunch periods, for instance. You know, sometimes you'll hear about schools that have undersized facilities that might, I call core facilities cafeteria, media, PE for high schools and middle schools, and administration. So those are the four things that are, you generate permission based on the number of kids, number of seats at a school. So if you have a school that used to be seven hundred fifty and now it's a thousand, you might want to look at expanding the cafeteria in the future. That's the one that most people are concerned with. Sometimes a school board will say, we're going to get new media centers across the district. So it's already recorded in there how many square feet you could do. Again, it's your menu of things. It's not required. It's not even something Suzanne told me you were thinking about doing, but it's there for reference if you just wanted to know. The last thing I'm going to mention is the district-wide recommendations. Fortunately, the school, I mean, the state has allowed this list of eight things that are implicitly part of the survey, whether it's mentioned or not. So when you look at your work plan and you have ADA improvements at a school that are funded in your work plan, you say, wait, I didn't see that in the survey, and we're going to spend CO and DS money on it because this is where most districts spend their CO and DS money, are district-wide. So it's, you can read them. I'm not going to read them out loud, but just to know that you can build these things with CO and DS money. And it's, I, I talk about this money like it's some big pot of money, but if you look at your budget, I can't remember how much it is. It's what, nine hundred thousand dollars a year. So all this work is to regulate nine hundred thousand dollars. And you know that you're going to spend nine hundred thousand dollars soon as you replace a roof at some school. So that's why I'm mentioning this list is the survey, you have to show the state that you have enough seats, you have to get permission to tear down your buildings. But as far as spending money, you spend money where you see the need now, except for that little bit of money, and most of it's spent on these, these eight recommendations. So it makes the labor of thinking through, oh, is it in the survey or not, pretty easy. I'd like to mention, since I've been here in 2017, we have spent our CO and DS money on roofs and HVAC projects. Okay, that's, that's the end of the presentation, and we've already had some questions, but I'm open for, I'll talk all afternoon if you want to. I'd like to mention, I don't know, did they get them? You've got this document that looks huge. This is the huge document that this is what this database looks like, and it is an ugly database. And if you, for instance, if I make a recommendation to tear down a building at a school, it's going to be a four-page list of all the rooms that I'm going to take out of that building. It's going to say remodel, removing room 101, 102, 103, and it goes all the way through the building and then replacing it with, and it has nothing because it just said, it would be an easier thing to say tear down building one, but instead they spend four pages telling you which rooms you're taking out. So it's a mean document. So if you have any questions, please ask Suzanne, she can check with me. But the document is just really unfriendly. Just wanted to mention that.
I have some questions for Suzanne, Ms. Wren, for the survey. Is anyone?
I, I have.
Okay, well, let's start with Ms. Certain, we'll just come down the road.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Mahoney. I've had a couple of questions. The projected cost on, when I went through, they seemed kind of low. I was wondering how, like for instance, on the document I was given.
If you put in new construction, it is based on the cost per student station as prescribed in the Florida statutes.
Okay.
And if it doesn't have student stations in it, it's based on a typical facility list times the number of student stations divided by the square feet. And so it gives you a square foot cost, and that's where it comes from. If it's remodeling and renovation, these numbers, for the most part, came straight out of your work plan. So the low cost on new construction usually is because it's a small building, may not have many student stations. That's pretty much what.
Right, it's a, it's a D O E formula. Okay, that's what I was thinking, but I don't think we're held to that, are we?
No. You have to meet costs per student station on another side of the house they have. But in terms of the dollars of the survey, they're just calculations that are convenient for DOE.
Okay, all right, that's, that one. And then the Metcalf increasing two hundred eighty-five seats. I was, I was really trying to follow the logic on that. I, I didn't understand why when we've got the other schools that are under enroll, like how, how could, help me with that.
That was my question as well, Madam Chair.
That was, that was something that we had planned from the beginning with Metcalf. That was something that was incorporated into the design from, from the get-go, was to increase the capacity of Metcalf. And that was how it was designed, and that's how it's being constructed. And there's also a plan that's in place for the location of a future classroom building if needed on the Metcalf campus.
I'm still perplexed by that.
Yeah.
That was before we even decided to rezone. That's why I'm, you know, revision and trying to move kids around. So I was just trying, I was just, I was puzzled by that. And Ms. Pickett answered my questions about, because every school had the increase or impact on core facilities, so you've already answered that. My other question, I have, but I won't. It was in, there were several schools where we, you have on there where we'll remove the relocables and you had, and let me find the student.
I know what you're, taking away relocables at every site. That is because the state allows you to remove an owned relocable when it's 20 years old. And they also allow you, most districts, when they lease relocables, the lease is five years or less. So it's saying theoretically, if these portables age out or if we remove leased relocables, we would need new seats. But again, that's permissive, not prescriptive, but it helps generate new student stations. So for instance, the need for elementary I shows up because if you didn't have portables across the district, you'd have enough seats to build. Or any of the other additions, actually, same thing. If you leave all the portables there, DOE's going to say, oh, you don't need any new seats. But on paper, you're allowed to take them away. So most districts try to return leased relocables because of cost.
Right.
And build permanent. But in terms of portables that age out, they usually turn them into other uses or they turn them to general school space, which doesn't carry student stations. So once they hit 20 years old, that's what the statute allows. Does that make sense?
Yeah, so once they're 20 years old, we don't have to count them as, as.
Correct. As student stations. And that's something that we have as a goal district-wide, is to get rid of our portables as much as possible and especially the leased units because that's a, a pretty significant expense that we carry every year. The other thing about portables is the more portables you add to a site, the more you're going to overload the core facilities. And that's the, to use Idlewild as an example, previous to the redevelopment, we had children eating lunch at nine-thirty in the morning because the core facility didn't support the number of children there. There were so many portables. So that's something that will be addressed as, within the re-zoning efforts that will be beginning this summer.
All right, those are my questions. Thank you, Dr. Mahoney.
All right, thank you, Dr. Mahoney. Yes, Dr. Mahoney.
I was thinking, Mr. Fisher, about Metcalf and capacity. Is Mr. White is here? And he's pretty graphic, but he's.
Okay. Mr. White?
Could you, their question is, could you repeat the question?
So I was, I was trying to figure out, I see that Metcalf were increasing the capacity two hundred or fifty, two hundred eighty-five seats. And I was wondering the reasoning behind that because pre-construction, Metcalf only has like two hundred kids there. So it's already under enrolled. Why will we expand in the capacity when the discussion is just now started with rezoning? So I, I don't understand why we were building a bigger school when the existing school was already under, was under enrolled before construction started.
Part of the discussion was to.
Mr. White, you'll need to pull up your mic.
I'm sorry. Part of, part of the discussion was in terms of having an overall quality facility that could accommodate the children, other children in the area with the idea that, you know, if you have a new school, those parents want their children to go to a new school, it would provide the opportunity for consolidation should that occur in terms of other schools in the area. So Metcalf moving on into the future could be, would be able to accommodate however many number of students. And with the overall plan that you could add another building depending on how the plans were because there was actually discussion about the need for rezonings back then, at least internally, that that facility would be able to handle additional students.
So it sounds like, when you say consolidation, that sounds like closing. So it sounded like there was some type of internal discussion of closing schools and following the students to Metcalf?
I think it was anticipated that when you build a new school, it would pull students from the other existing schools in the area, which would get them to the point where it would not be feasible. You know, there's been the discussion that you really need about six hundred kids to break even, that through their natural attrition, that other schools in the area would be impacted. And so if that did occur, we'd have the ability to accommodate those students in Metcalf.
I don't think that has ever been shared with us.
No, first, my first time hearing, thank you. I, nope. Only time I heard about school closing is when it was popped up, we closed To Williger since we're open an eye. That was the first conversation I recall I've ever had internally or as, with, with you all as my colleagues. Thank you, Mr. White, for that clarification, for that.
Madam Chair, I.
Well, let's see.
Okay. I'm done, I'll let you go to the next question.
I was going to go right down the road.
Oh, okay.
But if you have something that was connected with what you said.
Well, you know what, I had the same question about us expanding, but I was, my question was just about, this is my first time seeing as a new, new board member, and I thank you for, Ms. Wren, I think I'm, am I saying your name right? For explaining the presentation. Because when it says requirements, requires that districts field every school to within two classrooms before approving new seats that will include the expended estate funds, first thing came to my thought was, then, if we had seats, so why did we, how were we able to build a new school?
Okay, first of all, sales tax money is being used for elementary I.
Right, right.
So that, that way, that's there. But the place where it talks about kids, if theoretically, if I spread your COFTI over all your schools and leave forty-four empty seats at the elementary and middle and fifty empty seats at the high school, you have the need for additional seats. If you take away the portables and you spread them evenly all the way around. So that's how, that's, and it's called your membership table, and it is on page 193. And it's, it's a theoretical spreading of the students throughout the district. So if you did the math at the end where it says recommended capacity and you subtract total COFTI, you're going to come out to forty-four seats at most of your schools or fifty. So it says you need some new seats somewhere. So that's, it's just a theoretical exercise to get you into the survey to get exactly what you're trying to build already, pretty much.
Yeah, I, I know that school I was built with, with, there has been, you know, with the funds, but I was just curious, and like you say, you didn't have to do it, this didn't make sense. And I know we had capacity in the district period anyway.
I didn't hear that last time.
I said, because we already had capacity anyway. I was just looking at that, but thank you.
And, and I know that this is a brave school board because I know you're getting ready to do district-wide redistricting or county-wide redistricting.
Reimagining.
And I tell you what, I could write the speeches and tell you right now what people are going to come up here and say, well, you tell them that their child's going to change schools. And it's a brave thing to do, and it's what the state expects you to do. And so that's why with regulated money, you can only do what the state thinks you're going to do.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. And, and because you have served on the board and bravado, I'm from Orange County. I understand what you're stating about reimagining and re-zoning. Everyone will never be happy. But this is something courageous that this board will need to do. Dr. Paulson?
I don't know if this has any, just when you said you use your, the regulated money for the air conditioning, I remember that a few minutes ago, that just brought up a thought. GHS is going to be redone with a three-story building, correct?
That's the, that's the.
That's what I think they said. That's what I think they said.
Well, that is, it's not a definite plan, but it's an idea.
Well, it's been put forward.
Of how to fit the school on, on the site that we have that's landlocked.
Okay.
That's one of those holistic things, Dr. Paulson.
Right, that's what most districts do anyway. I know down Hollywood, where I came from, they tore down the fingers and put three stories.
With the older students, you can go up.
All right, well, let's jump in on that. So it, very inefficient air conditioning is going to rise. Will you admit to that? I used to teach there.
It depends on the buildings, the buildings that.
The finger buildings, which is the majority of the school.
Yes, absolutely. And it's also partly because of the, not just the system, but the building envelope.
That's what I'm saying.
The lack thereof.
They weren't built for, you know, it was windows and everything. So if we had to get permission to do that, now we're talking about making major changes at our schools. And we have to get permission for the major changes and what we're going to do, which is air, air conditioning? If we just put, I don't, do we, have we looked at how old these air conditioners are?
We have to get permission for dump, demolishing buildings. And we have to, it has to be included in, in the plan survey to be able to use CO and DS money on air conditioning. That's why we've put it as a blanket in the district-wide recommendations for every single school.
But we know how old those air conditioners are, like problems we might have doing that? You see what I'm saying? If you had to have permission, and now you're going to go ahead, say you're going to tear down A, B, and C of CHI, okay? Let's say that. Then you have to get permission now, and then look at things like the air conditioning?
Well, we're, if we're looking at the future demolition of a building, we are not, I'm not planning, in my mind, to invest money in those buildings if we're planning on.
But do we know how, if they've been invested in, you're only here three years, right? That's all, I'm, I'm just saying, is that something that we?
The custody requires you to report how much money you've spent on the buildings in recent years. Before the state will approve the demolition of the building, that's one of the questions in the custody formula is.
That's what I'm getting at.
What are the recent expenditures on this building?
Sure.
They aren't going to let you, if you spend millions of dollars.
Yeah, right.
It's going to be very rare.
It'll be interesting to see that, at those schools. Uh, Diphine might be another one. But um, I'm just looking at, that's what most people in the state have done with these finger classrooms, anyway. All right, another thing is.
I don't, I don't, I'm, did I, did we answer your question? I'm not sure what the question is. Okay.
Yeah, lady answered it, thank you. The other thing is um, I think we, the thing was uh, Metcalf is uh, about, I don't know if I was still president of the union, but the plan was to close Rawlins. You remember that?
That was a proposal, but.
No, they were already, they were already, because I was president of the union, and I got involved with trying to stop it.
It was a, I thought it was a hearsay.
No, no hearsay. Uh, I was involved in it, I was involved in keeping it open. But um, that's what I'm saying, that's what, might be where that came from now. So that's all, I'm just saying, you know, being around as much as I, as long as I've been, it's uh, Rawlins was, this is, was within two months of being closed. And uh, so that might be where it came from. I, I don't know, I'm just trying to say, where did this come from? That's probably when people were planning it, they're just going back to the plan from before, that's all. You got, it sort of, the question is, we'd never heard of this, right? That's prob, I just said, that might be a legitimate, a place where it came from, that's all I'm saying.
Even though if it might have been what you're saying.
Mm-hmm.
It shouldn't have ever been to this degree, where we are building a school, anticipating all of these children needing to be there to fill the seats, and, and closure some other schools.
Yeah, I, I had no mind set up, I'm just trying to give you a little information, that's all.
I would hope that facilities would not, would not be thinking in that manner.
I think we should think in no manner. If we're going to imagine, well, we should imagine all things that could happen, not just certain things that could happen. Otherwise, we're not imagining.
Well, the imagining piece just came up with this new superintendent.
Right.
So you can't put that back on what happened with Clark, Boett, Marazza, Chambers, all of the other superintendents.
I'm not putting it on anybody, I'm just saying what something might have come, come from. I'm not arguing with you.
No, no.
I'm just telling you, giving you information.
We are talking, we are having a discussion. There is no argument, I'm just trying to make a point with you.
Okay.
That this superintendent currently has brought in that topic.
Right, and my statement is, that I'd like to make known, is I hope we don't have our minds made up how we're going to do it. When we imagine it. That's all.
Well, and I think just as.
I'd like to wait, waste my breath ever, if I don't have a say for people listening. I think we all should listen, everybody. Interesting.
I think just to start off to think, um, I guess the concern I have is that there would be a staff um, ideas circulate with staff, and they would get going, and the board would not be made aware of that, because we have to.
Yeah.
That, that's the, the concern for me, that I would have. I would think that um, the underlying plans and ideas for staff, because we're policymakers, and we have to approve what is coming, so what comes, you know, before us. And I think a basis in um, should be shared with us, and us asking question, that's part of us having workshops and receiving support documents and asking questions, so that we can understand the found, for me, I can understand the foundation and where we're headed with that, you know? Um, I don't want to just make decisions just with one little sliver of information. I want to know how things relate to each other, you know, um, and the, the impact, not just now, but the historical, possibly historical reason behind it, and where we're moving forward. And to have a vision for where we're going for, you know, you don't want to make a decision with just, it's so myopic, where you're just looking at right now. We've got to really think in, as the presentation has just shown us, and look at how we think growth will happen, and, and um, and our student count, where the students are living, and things of that nature. So we're investing money, and we can be a good steward of taxpayer dollars. We're not just, um, as I've said before, just running and trying to build buildings and add portables to chase um, the population growth.
Well, you've heard me, I, I've been saying over and over again, we need to have a population study. I mean, that, and that has to be out ten, fifteen years too. Without making decisions, we, we, I don't see us making a decision without that. If we don't have that, I, I don't, I'm, I'm, I'm reiterating what you're saying, is that we're just shooting a bizarre. And I don't want to be in the same place again, or you, it's not a future board, being in the same place we are now, for three or four years from now, that's all. And I think we're saying the same thing.
Any further questions, Dr. Paulson?
No, thank you very much.
Okay, Mrs. McGraw. You're good. Dr. Simon? You're good. I have a couple of questions. Um, looking at the survey report, help me understand, because maybe because this is done every five years, and this, um, I'm just on page um, one seventy-two of two oh five. And um, Metcalf, just looking at the new construction twenty twenty-two, although we are in the midst of that now, was that, were those dates given? And then I see following twenty twenty-five, that they will have remodeling, and that didn't seem right when they're doing all of this construction now.
I'll, I'll mention to you what that is. Remember how I said how ugly it is?
Yes, you did.
This report?
Yes, ma'am.
That remodeling recommendation is, building one is going to be removed, and apparently, I'm not sure I got it right even, but you usually build while the kids are still on campus, and you tear down the building later. So that remodeling is tearing down the building.
After all, after, I get, okay.
So you're spending the money now and starting to build, and then those remodeling things, what I was mentioning, removing, and it's showing you're removing thirty-four thousand one hundred sixty-nine square feet, but it doesn't show you putting anything back in there. So if you're remodeling really, you'd be putting something back in there, like turning two classrooms into one. But this is the ugly way that they show you tearing down buildings, that's all it means.
So in other words, what you're saying, when, when school opens in the fall for Metcalf, the beautiful school that's going to be there, but you will not tear, start demolishing until twenty twenty-five? Is that what you're saying?
That, that timeframe depends on your construction schedule, I'm not sure. We, we're tearing those buildings down as soon as we're able to move our administration, media, and classrooms out during the summer.
So just disregard these dates and stuff that's in this report?
What's the opening date for that school? August, okay, so they'll be tearing it down before that.
Okay.
We can actually fix that, if that's, makes it fix, just, just to make it more transparent.
And I know our project list goes all the way to twenty thirty. However, I looked at many of the pages in all two hundred and five of them, and many of them say, most of the construction is twenty twenty-six.
It's a five-year plan.
We're going to have all those buildings being done during that period?
But, um, what is the question, I'm sorry?
Most of the, well, much of the pages say twenty twenty-six, and I know that some of the schools in our project, proposed project list goes to twenty thirty. So I didn't know if, I didn't see any, in, anything in, well, again, all right, I just figured it out. Five years, so you wouldn't have the, the twenty thirty stuff in, all right.
And they could be in here, but you won't be able to pay for them until later, so. They might be in here, if you get a windfall, you'll have them in here already.
All right, I, I, it, I, it just dawned on me. Um, it was so much to read and look at, and I don't like packets coming, and I don't read. So I went through every, and highlighted the dates and when the renovation's based on the construction. But anyway, I'm not in facilities.
And the, the proposed project list that you're referring to is, is something that did contain the increased capacity for Metcalf. And the, the plans for Metcalf with the increased capacity did come to the board for approval, as well as the GMP for the construction. So in terms of how students move around, I can't predict that. And I can certainly tell you that I was not part of any kind of plan by staff to close schools. So I was basically, you know, basically we constructed what was in the plan and what came before this board for approval. I am looking forward to the revisioning of the district and the redistricting, so we use our facilities more um, financially feasible, in a more financially feasible way. I'm looking forward to having a vision that couples the project, the proposed projects with how we revision the district. I think it needs to be that collaborative, um, that, that collaborative effort, um, you know, for both programs and facilities. In my mind, when you have an amazing educational opportunity for students, it, it, it's programs, people, and place. It's all three. And I'm looking forward to going through that process. So I can tell you, from the bottom of my heart, I, I do this work because I love it, and I want to provide high-quality facilities to students to learn in. And I am upfront and honest with everything that I do.
I thank you for those comments, and we look forward to future work, and thank you, thank you both.
One more thing. Isn't the price of construction skyrocketing right now? I, I heard it was up, up two hundred percent, just recently. Well, that would affect what we're doing, I was wondering, thought about that.
That's something we're going to have to look at.
It's happening right now.
When we start to, when we do the district-wide revisioning, we're going to have to, and we look at what our projects are going to be, we're going to have to look at the current market and what the, the current costs are.
Prediction maybe what's going to happen. Yeah, okay. I think it's important.
We'll definitely take that into account.
Thank you.
I want to remind my colleague that we have a very, very long agenda. It took us an hour for this. And Ms. Rela is standing for Business Diversity Initiative. And after that, then we have all of the Title I, and then Ms. Rela will come back with budget. So um, we will take a break probably at four, um, depending on how quickly we can get through the next section.
Oh, yes, sir.
All right, thank you guys so much, thanks to the board, um, and Superintendent Simon for the opportunity.
Put your mic up on, Mr. Rela.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
There we go. Uh, thanks for the opportunity. This is a, the Business Diversity Initiative is something, um, I'm real passionate about, you know, the discussions we've had with staff has been amazing, and the superintendent, and I know it's a board priority too, so we're really excited today, um, to give you an update and talk about steps forward. Certainly, one of the most important things, or the most important thing, is to get some feedback and direction from the board, um, on the direction that they would like us to go. Obviously, with what we're dealing with, with the sales tax, it's really, in my mind, um, a generational kind of impact that we can have on our local diverse businesses, and, you know, change the outcomes locally for all those folks. I did want to remind the board, we are definitely in the early stages. We kicked off the initiative, actually, after we had already issued GMPs and, and architectural agreements for our current projects. They were, it's, we're kind of coming after the fact and doing it. I think for most districts, that would pose as, as a real issue, to be honest with you. But I think what we noticed is, the construction managers who will be presenting here in a little bit, already had really great programs, um, and they're already, were doing really great stuff. And um, and I think that will kind of bear itself out. I think when we look at the spending reports, which we provided for the board, um, I think we have a really good baseline. I was kind of surprised and, and happy with where we are with, you know, again, just in the very beginning stages of initiative. But obviously, understanding we're nowhere near where we want to be. And I think we would all kind of agree with that, looking at the numbers. But the reality is, you know, we're in year two of a twelve-year referendum, in my mind, you know, where we want to be looking for is year twelve, where are we at there? And, and have we made progress? And I think collectively, um, with the partners and the groups, I think we're definitely going to do that. And, you know, the kind of, the, the bottom line is, and, and we'll talk about it a little bit as we get to the presentation, but, you know, if you want to do business with the School Board of Latch County Construction, you better prioritize business diversity. So that's kind of been my message, and, and when we issue RFPs and select CMs, it's a huge piece of what we discuss and what we evaluate. So just a quick agenda, uh, we're going to update the board on the diversity initiative, look at purchasing best practices, go a little bit into the facilities-related procurement. Uh, we do have our construction managers on our current projects here. Uh, they're going to present on some of their, the, the work that they do for business diversity. And of course, the most important part again is getting some direction from the board on what they would like staff to proceed with. It's obviously a huge opportunity for the board. Two thousand eighteen, we approved the sales tax, which estimated to generate two hundred and sixty-five million over twelve years. That's a great deal of money. It's all going to construction, uh, most of it hopefully local, the local form, uh, firms here in Latchua County. And the initiative itself, obviously, is to increase to the fullest extent possible the participation in our construction program for our local small and diverse, meaning minority women veteran-owned businesses on these construction projects. Goal, uh, to leverage the economic impact that the house sent for schools by providing these businesses opportunities, subcontractors, contractors, design professionals. Obviously, we really are trying to capture and promote the minority small, um, women and veteran-owned businesses. And then, of course, we want to make a long-lasting impact, try to build something that's sustainable, change the outcomes, build these companies up by directing the funds to the extent that it's possible towards the, these firms. The strategy, uh, we're still kind of building a lot of the processes out. And as you guys know, I'm kind of jumping in halfway through, I know Paul and his team have been working on this before, but I just wanted to give just a little bit of a situation report, where, where baseline, where we're at, where we're at right now. where we're at, where we're at right now. We obviously included the business diversity in the rubric for scoring. So when we're evaluating and selecting our construction managers, who are then selecting subcontractors, tier 1, tier 2, et cetera, we're evaluating them on how much effort and results that they have with promoting small minority women-owned businesses. Uh, we include, um, reporting and, um, on the tier 1 and tier 2. And throughout this presentation, and for those that are watching online, we put hot links in here, so I have, for example, for this, um, report that we have, that's our spend to date for our construction projects, particularly those that are going directly to the SMBE businesses. It'll link you right out so you can kinda see it, but they're embedded throughout the presentation. So if you want to go look online and, and look at some of the backup documentation, it's all kinda there. Something that's new, we're rolling out in June, is a vendor registration portal. And what that will do is allow us to capture, allow vendors to register online and also include their business designation status, if they have one, their license, their W9. So we'll kinda capture all that digitally. But the good part is it allows us to push out notifications to those businesses directly when we put out bids, a little bit more direct to the customer, which is in this case, the vendor we're trying to recruit to participate in our construction projects. But we're really excited about this. I think it's gonna be really good and help participation, help communication going forward. We have a dedicated webpage for bid opportunities for the ACCPS. And it, one thing I just wanted to mention, with all the construction, you guys see as you go and visit our, our schools, particularly the three, four that are concurrent right now, at, really at any point during the year, we are in some form of a bid. So it's virtually a year-round bid, construction, CM selection, architectural engineering, et cetera. We are also, uh, will continue to advertise all our requests, uh, for design and construction services online. We're gonna be looking at expanding the role of the story map, making sure it's up to date. Uh, we do wanna include some of the videos and update financial information. I think we sent to the board last Friday, I wanna say, uh, the diversity videos that, um, our construction managers produced. We wanna get those on the storyboard, we wanna push those out with Jackie Johnson in her office, to kinda show the community what we're doing, what our construction managers are doing, particularly for the diverse business component. And obviously, social media. And then, you know, a, a big deal is the collaboration with the stakeholders. And I've got a whole nother slide on that, because, you know, obviously, we are not necessarily in the construction business, but I think, um, and it's not really, this is, this diversity isn't like a school board-only issue, it's a community issue. And that's kinda how we need to approach it. We've got a lot of folks, um, here to help us. And it's not just one entity that's gonna improve the outcomes. It's gotta be everyone kinda coming together, using their collective will, goals, and desires to make, you know, the vision happen. So, the, put together a list of people, potential people we can collaborate with. This is, I'm sure, not a complete list. I'm sure we missed some folks that are gonna be really big with the initiative going forward. Obviously, the Chamber of Commerce, they just launched their inclusive gainsville initiative, which really ties in perfectly with, um, what we're trying to do. Uh, the construction communities is gonna be really big. Again, the, the folks behind me are gonna come up and talk about the stuff that they're doing. City gainsville, other municipalities, uh, the Florida County Commissions, of course, and the two colleges, uh, Santa Fe and the University of Florida, here locally. And if there's questions about this, Dr. McNeely, um, I'm happy to answer those if you just want me to keep rolling.
Okay.
And at this point, I'll turn it over. Jeff Garcia, he's our purchasing manager, to talk a little bit about procurement.
Chairperson McNeely, board members, Superintendent Simon, thank you for your time. I'll be as brief as possible.
Would you state your name, would you state your name again?
Oh, uh, I'm, my name is Jeffrey Garcia. I'm the procurement manager for the School Board of Latchua County. I actually replaced Wayne Hackett after his retirement in December, so I thank you for your time. So some of our core fundamentals, we tried to distill, uh, a wide body of knowledge down into a couple of slides. So, the, the gist of procurement fundamentals is, um, our goal is to provide a level playing field for all vendors in any community, so whether it's our local community or the national community at large, uh, because some of our procurements do actually reach much further out from our local community. And then, another core fundamental is avoiding factual and apparent conflicts of interest. Having a factual conflict of interest would be something like owning more than 5% of a business that the district would do business with. Uh, that would be a financial conflict of interest. And apparent conflict of interest could be, uh, there's the appearance of favoritism in family relations, if, if, uh, somebody that is in charge of a procurement or a department head or an end user has a direct connection with a vendor. That could be the appearance of a conflict of interest. And we would typically ask that individual to refuse themselves from the procurement process. It doesn't prevent the district from doing business with them. It just means that the individual that has the apparent conflict of interest within the organization should, for all intents and purposes, step back just to give the, uh, the community the, the feeling that everything is above board. So we don't want anybody to ever have the implication that they're conflicted. We always want to maintain and promote ethical standards, uh, maintain compliance with applicable laws, policies, and procedures. And then, one of the most important fundamentals is to identify and execute the most favorable sourcing strategy and contract structure to maximize competition. Uh, we have a number of different types of contracts that we use. We use invitations to negotiate, a request for proposals, and invitations to bid are our three core procurement strategies. An invitation to bid, very briefly, would be, um, I want to buy about the pens. I know the color of the pen I want, give me your best price. Request for proposal would be, um, we have a general idea. We know we need implements to put thoughts on paper. We don't know how to get there, give us how you propose to get us there. And the vendors would suggest computers, or pens, or pencils, just to kinda give you an idea. Uh, we also want to deliver innovative solutions that balance stakeholder needs, best practices, uh, the core mission, goals, and procurement regulations to address strategic objectives. Examples of that would be something like, uh, combining procurements from different departments to get to achieve economies of scale. If you know that, uh, certain schools have certain projects, you know, in the works for their student population, or they need to purchase new laptops for their classrooms, but you also know that another school is also looking at spending some of their funds on that type of purchase as well. If we communicate that thoroughly, we can combine the purchases to achieve, achieve a better than price. So things like that, just kind of trying, trying to take in as much information as possible to do what's best for the district. And then, uh, something that's really important for my role, public agency procurement officials have a fiduciary responsibility for detecting that. Uh, so we essentially must always try to achieve the best price while achieving the goal of the district. So it is, it is a completely, uh, it's a position void of emotion. It's a position, uh, void of any outside interference. It's essentially, we have X amount of money to spend, we need to achieve goal Y. How do we get there efficiently, ethically, and responsibly? The second slide I'll be discussing, bid protests. So, uh, two of the most common issues related to bid protests are favoritism and cone of silence violations. And again, this brings us back to apparent conflict of interest or true conflict of interest. The appearance, whether a valid issue or perceived by the public, bias can lead directly to a bid protest. Uh, the other common causes of bid protests are nonresponsiveness of the winning bid, inadequate licensures from the bidder or proposer, um, the submission coming from a not responsible bidder, bid mistakes, scoring and evaluation errors, sunshine law violations, untimely submissions, and arbitrary rejection of all bids. That, the last one, would typically happen, uh, and as far as I'm aware, in my five years, that has never happened in this district, if a particular procurement official wanted a certain end result, did not achieve the end result they wanted, and they reject all bid submissions to re-procur. So that would be an ethical violation.
You said reject, to do what, Alan?
So, so, uh, you know, you get 10 bids to, to sell us this podium right here? You didn't get the lowest bid from the vendor you wanted to do business with?
I see.
So you tell everybody, we're, we're not taking any bids, we're gonna put it back out.
Okay.
Yeah. Uh, so pursuant to our own Board Policy 6324, once a procurement has been advertised, meaning we posted on our website, we've notified vendors that it's a publicly available bid, the only personnel authorized to speak to potential vendors are the purchasing department staff, our staff attorney, and the planning and construction department. And more, more specifically, planning and construction department procurements, they would be handling with the vendor community. Uh, so that's typically construction projects above 2 million. And construction projects, for the most part, below 2 million would be handled through my office, or through our purchasing department. Communications of any kind between a potential vendor, service provider, bidder, lobbyist, or consultant, and the staff of the district, including board members, is prohibited. So if you do receive any questions while a procurement is active, I would, I would ask that all questions be routed to my office or Ms. Nguyen's office, depending on if it's a major construction project or a standard purchase. Is there any questions I can answer at this time?
Um, I don't have a question, I would like to speak to the board.
Yes, please.
Speak into the mic, please.
So, I, I'd actually just like to say, probably about two weeks ago, I think it was, I went to the shortlisting meeting that they had for the Westwood project. And, um, after walking out, the meeting concluded, I walked out of the building talking with someone, not even thinking it was a personal conversation. Got in the parking lot, was parked near a person, spoke with him about something that was not material to the bid, because we know common people. And then spoke with a third person. We actually start, stood there and had a conversation, the two gentlemen and myself. So, I, I don't think it had any impact on, um, the bid, because I'm not a scorer, hadn't voted on it, and, but the appearance of there being some type of thing. So, I don't know how we'll proceed for that, but I do want to make that, disclose that right now. And we can, we can talk with Delaney, we can talk with the superintendent, whoever that needs to be happening, we can talk. But I did want to tell my colleagues or whatever, but I went to the shortlisting meeting because I wanted to see the process and how it was done. I've asked lots of questions about it since I, before I came on the board and since I've been on the board. And so that, um, the, Westwood was the first project that I paid attention to and knew that that, the RFQ had gone out and that the list, the shortlisting meeting was gonna happen and my schedule permitted me to come, attend it, so I did. But, like I said, came out, didn't even think about, I, I know about the cone of silence, but didn't even think about, when I come out, hey, how you doing? You know, I know this person, you know, this, didn't even think of it as such, you know, so.
And, and honestly, that does happen, and it's always the, the, the idea behind true and apparent.
Right.
We know, we know ourselves if it's a true conflict or not, because you know that you have no vested interest in the procurement, or you guys didn't discuss the procurement, it's, it's outside eyeballs. And that goes the same for, for me and anyone else. If I have an active procurement and, you know, I, I'm seeing at a potential vendor's place of business, that would be an apparent conflict on my behalf. So, uh, once, once the procurement is out in public, we try to, including the purchasing department and Ms. Nguyen's purchasing staff, we try to have a hands-off approach and do everything in writing. So if there are ever any questions, and somebody called me on my office phone, I immediately ask them, please submit the question in writing. That way, uh, there's a, a public record of any communication with a vendor that's prospective and on a open record.
So, uh, Mr. Garcia, so if we have a bid that you all have agreed on or the committee evaluated, and it, whatever companies won the bid, we should not say anything to you or Ms. Nguyen, or how, what, what happens then?
No, no, it would actually, uh, kinda be the opposite. You would only be speaking to myself and Ms. Nguyen.
Right.
You wouldn't speak to the vendor community at large.
Oh, no, no, definitely not to the, the companies, but to, to you or to Ms. Nguyen? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, that all communication comes through us. So even if there was a member, uh, of the board that had a specific question, uh, about a procurement, and it was something that we wanted to ask the vendor community while it was still in the public domain, we can issue an addendum posing that question to the public, but that would all go through us. We wouldn't actually contact any vendor directly, uh, even ourselves would not contact a vendor directly. We'd put out a public addendum and receive responses from all the vendors.
But the problem that I see, well, to me, if you've already decided and something should come up from one of us, or from me, let's say me, you can't go back then and undo what you've already done.
So, it, it would depend on the timing. If you're saying, uh, uh, an intent to award, so that's when we place a, 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 an item on the board agenda for, for your all, your all's consideration, consideration and approval, that would still be considered an active procurement. The cone of silence only dies, uh, at the time that the board acts on it.
Okay.
So whether you accept or reject it, if you approve the award, as soon as you guys gavel through that meeting, it is now an awarded contract. So we can speak to whichever vendors, or, uh, if there was a vendor that was not the awardee and they had questions, we can absolutely speak with them as soon as you've gavelled it through.
Okay. Ms. Nguyen? Oh, I'm, I'm.
I was just always also gonna comment that I have been having, um, there having contractors who reached out to me, and I am not speaking this long, I'm actually forwarding along. The way I'm a mechanic is hard to prove, because there's always a cone of silence, so I'm pretty much just hoping that it's not.
Ms. Nguyen?
Do you have any more questions?
Oh, I thought you wanted to address what?
No, I'll just, I'll go next.
Okay. All right. Any other questions?
Ms. McGraw, does she have a question?
Ms. McGraw? Okay.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia, thank you.
Good afternoon again, board members, Chairman McNeely and Superintendent Clark. Clark, I'm sorry. I'm a little upset from the last presentation, I apologize. Superintendent Simon.
I can, you can hear me.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, ma'am.
I think you gotta hit that mic up, um.
Okay. Good afternoon, Chairwoman McNeely, board members, and Superintendent Simon. I'm Suzanne Nguyen, Director of Community Planning. I'm gonna go through our facilities-related design and construction opportunities. We have continuing contracts. The first two bullets that you see up there apply to projects that have, that are less than $2 million in construction, estimated construction costs, and less than $200,000 in design fees. So, we go through a process to advertise and evaluate design professionals to select them for continuing contracts for, for the design of these projects. So we have a list of design professionals we can go to for these types of projects. We have, uh, gone through a process to select construction companies at the various task order levels. You can see the categories that we have up there. So we have our pre-qualified task order construction companies at each of those levels. When we have a project that's designed for, the, the design professional gives an estimate on what the project, they, they predict the project will cost, then we advertise, we, we solicit bids from those contractors that are pre-qualified in that particular category. When we have construction contract, estimated construction costs of greater than $2 million, the last two bullets apply. We do a hard bid, we can do a hard bid typically when the project is estimated to be in the range of 2 million to 8 million. We'll look at doing a hard, hard bid. Uh, this is the category that Oakview Middle School addition is going to fall into. And then, we have used, uh, the construction manager at risk, construction delivery. With our first projects out of the gate, there are, there are other construction delivery methods, but we've used the construction manager at risk. The general contractor provides value engineering during the design stages. They work in concert with our team and the design professional to value engineer so we can get the best price possible for our project. They issue a guaranteed maximum price, which is some, for the project, which is something that comes to the board for approval. And the CM hires all the subcontractors and assumes the risk of the project cost. The CM, uh, at-risk selection process has been, uh, The CM at-risk selection process has been first, scope is determined. We advertise the request for submissions. At that time, the cone of silence goes into effect. And we've started to set up mandatory pre-submitting meetings at the project site. This accomplishes two things. It gives me a list of folks that when I get questions back, I have a contact list that I can send the answers to all questions, to any question, to everyone. So that level playing field is achieved. And also, it disrupts the school as little as possible. So the principal's not getting calls. We have one meeting and everybody gets the same information. All questions come to me, like I've already mentioned. And then if I get a question, I answer it to everyone on that list. The review committee signs cone of silence and non-conflict of interest forms. They receive all of, after those forms are executed, they receive the firm's submissions and the scoring rubric. Each committee member works independently to do their scoring. There's no collaboration between committee members. There's no communication about that, those submissions between committee members. We meet as a committee in a public meeting to shortlist, to compile our scores and come up with the composite scoring to shortlist. And then that leads to interviews. The interviews for Westwood are scheduled on May 19th from 12 to 5:00. And during that process, each committee member will score independently. At the end of all the interviews, we'll compile all the individual scores, come up with a ranking, a weighted ranking. And then the committee selection, which usually provides number one, two, and three, will come to the board for your approval. So if there's no questions at this time, I'd like to introduce, we have our three CMs here for our major projects that will be here to talk about their programs and initiatives, their goals for diverse workforce. Can I answer any questions at this time for anything I've discussed so far?
No, but I just wanted to say the videos were excellent. Thank you for sending those this weekend.
Okay.
Truly enjoyed all three.
And I did, since there were some challenges with watching them, I upped the timeline for getting them posted on our story map. So those are connected to our story map now. And I did send you the link for the story map as well.
Okay.
So all of our CMs that are here today, I've been, I feel really blessed to work with all of these folks. They've been a joy to work with. They really care about our schools and our community. And we have them in no particular order. We did a random drawing for who goes first.
So you had Parrish first.
We have Parrish first.
And then you have, I think, Scorpio and then CPPI. I've learned all three.
We have, actually, we have CPPI first, Scorpio, and then Parrish McCall.
I meant the way you had your videos, that's how I kept them in my mind.
So at this time, I'd like to introduce from CPPI, Marquesia Ikambami and Eric Drummond.
All right, Madam Chair, thank you for the opportunity to let us be here today. And we wanted to, first off, just say thank you for the opportunity, but more so, we wanted to bring you guys up to date on our progress so far and just discuss a little bit of how we approach vendor diversity and what our goals are, some metrics, and just kind of give you an overall sense. I know you saw the video, but we've got some more metrics here today that we can share with you as well.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Marquesia Ikambami with Dusier Construction Services, and I am the diverse partner of CPPI. We're going to jump right into these definitions in the event of time. On here, we're going to keep it very simple. We use the SBA and also the State of Florida's recommendation for what is considered a small minority woman-owned veteran or local business. You can see those definitions there. Anyone has any questions about those? Because I think everybody's going to go through these today, so it's kind of self-explanatory up there.
One thing we were asked to do was not to spend a lot of time talking about some of the metrics that we have on small and diverse businesses, but spend a little bit of time with local participation. I wish we would have ordered our slides a little differently, but you can see here, based on our Prairie View experience and where we are currently with Idlewild, some of our local participation. But more importantly, our philosophy is what we wanted to talk about today. And one major thing about our philosophy is that true inclusion really comes from two primary factors, and that's opportunity and growth. Giving a small business, a minority business, a woman-owned business, giving them an opportunity is what we're here to do. We want to try and draw from our local community, but we also want to draw from outside our community to try and make sure that we give that opportunity to absolutely everybody. But just one opportunity doesn't help anybody, really. I mean, from a standpoint, you let somebody paint a project for you one time, you help them one time. What we want to do is to be able to leverage that one opportunity to create more than one opportunity. Use that one opportunity that you get to build a relationship with us as a general contractor to get you back in the door. What can we do to make your business stronger? What can we do to make you a better businessperson? What can we do to get you faster access to your own capital? And how can we get you back out and promoting more in this community, more in your line of business, what you're doing, so that you can go to work for one of the other companies in this room, too? It's not just about us creating our own, but it's about increasing the fabric of our community and building a stronger industry for this region in general. I think you'll hear from other people today about some of the lack of skilled labor that we've got in our community. That's a nationwide problem. That's not unique to Alachua County. We are losing people in our trades, period. We're losing them quickly. And it's important that we're out there in front of it from this kind of top-down philosophy. We've got to believe that. When we start doing projects, you guys have got to believe that from that board position so that we can all start pushing that down so that the work can get done at project level. Ultimately, what we're trying to do is just provide more services, more products, more purchasing, more everything, for more people and more opportunity. It's about trying to include as many people as we can.
When you, back to that first part about what definitions are, there are certifications that are required. And one thing that I make sure that our team does not do is to make the certification a barrier for anybody. If you get a certification in the city, sometimes they say you got to get one in the county, then you have your state level and you have your federal level. Well, you pick one of the four. As long as you have something, we're willing to accept that. We don't want to pigeonhole people into, you can only work for us if you have this type of certification. If it says you're MBE, if it says you're a WBE, you're SBE, our team is willing to accept it.
One other aspect of our process that we're real proud of is we've got offices in multiple cities throughout Florida and throughout the southeast. We've actually been able to have Marquesia help us in Savannah, in our Jacksonville office, Orlando, and even as far south as Fort Myers. We actually have an office in Virginia, too. But what we've done is tried to make this process standardized all the way across our company so that we're building on the strength of other offices so we can draw people, provide opportunity. You know, for instance, maybe we have a small company in Orlando that happens to also do work in Gainesville. We wouldn't know that if we weren't reaching out to them at some of our other local offices to try and be able to find more and more people, to bring them in, more and more companies, to try and help grow and improve more local businesses. We also like to involve, you just saw a little bit about your own purchasing process. You've got the task order system that you guys use where smaller projects are dealt with in a different purchasing fashion than some of the larger projects. We also use our smaller project platform that we have, it's called Diversified Projects. We kind of like cording off everything that's under a couple of million dollars in construction costs. And we run it through a different methodology of the way that we manage projects. And by doing so, we can introduce subcontractors, suppliers, purchasers with us. We can get them into our system faster. That's the results there that you see at the bottom. We can get them into our system faster. We can also get their capital to turn around faster. One of the nationwide largest problems that small businesses have is activating capital. It's having it to start their business up and then maintaining the cash flow once they're up and rolling. They're instantly investing it into their own payroll, into buying the materials that they need to do their jobs, and their cash gets evacuated quickly. What we like to do is try and make sure that we can get that capital for them turned around quickly in the form of their payments as they're going. So our system can do that super effectively. And we also give them the opportunity for faster feedback. A lot of times, emerging businesses need the opportunity to understand what they're doing right, what they're doing wrong. What can I start doing? What can I stop doing? And inside our Diversified Projects, we give the opportunity for these folks to be able to get faster feedback, to be able to understand how things are going with their business. And from a long-term standpoint, what we're trying to do is some other stuff that you guys wouldn't see on a day-to-day basis. Just from our pre-construction department, we are working on trying to generate our own database of everybody that we've worked with in the past three years. Right now is what we're reaching back to, to try and find out who in our system, which is thousands of subcontractors and suppliers, how many of those are certified small businesses, are certified woman-owned businesses, so that we can get them into our database and be able to manage them faster and better. And then our new accounting integration, what can we do to identify those small businesses and flag them so we can get them that capital that I was just talking about? How can we get our guys paid faster so that they are making more of an impact in their communities and with their companies? But then also, from a local standpoint, we already mentioned Inclusive Gainesville. You can see my dumb picture up there. There I am talking at some other podium. But yeah, we're super involved with what the Gainesville Chamber is doing right now with Inclusive Gainesville to try and do. It even brings in some of career technical education aspects of what's going on with our industry and how we can promote small minority vendor participation. And they've got a business accelerator that they're working on as well that we're going to be involved with. And you guys have seen this metric before. I threw this in here just in case you guys wanted to see some more numbers that we had from Prairie View. Right now, Idlewild in the construction sequencing is just in a little different stage than some of the other projects you're going to see here today. I guess Scorpio's up next. I can go ahead and do your slides, too, but I think you'll probably do them better. But we thank you guys for the opportunity. I see the red light going on for me, so. We're here for any questions, if you guys have them, or we can just move forward here.
Madam Chair, I'll ask one question. Thank you, thank you all, excellent presentation. And I want to ask everybody the same question. In the last five years, how many minority GCs have you worked with?
How many minority GCs have we worked with? So out of our Orlando office, we've worked with one other. Marquesia, though, with Dusier Construction Services, has been our partner for the last five years. I think since 2016, we entered into a partnership agreement. And Marquesia works on every project with us, not just Idlewild, not just Prairie View, but everything that we do in all of our offices, she is a true partner with us.
Thank you, thank you.
At this time, I'd like to introduce the Scorpio team, Dominic Scorpio, Jennifer Denault, and Mike Beard.
Hi, can you hear me okay? Madam Chair and members of board, hello. Good afternoon. My name is Dominic Scorpio. I'm the president of Scorpio Corporation. I'm here today with Jennifer Denault. She's our marketing and community outreach director. I'm also here with Michael Beard. He is the president of Elevated Design and Construction and our partner on several projects in the community. We're excited to participate in the discussion. I think it's a very important one. Scorpio is a community-centered construction company. Everything we do supports the initiatives of our community and helps promote our vision of having an abundant life for all in our community. And we take the approach of mindfulness in what we do, the physical action that we do in every project we build. And we also take a societal view of what we're doing and how we're impacting the communities that we serve. As a community, we have diversity and disparity issues here in Alachua County. As a company and an industry, we have workforce shortages that we are addressing. And we're just excited to participate and be part of the solution. Those are not two mutually exclusive endeavors, by the way. One can support the other, and they could really address and elevate our community as a whole. So I'm going to have Jennifer and Michael discuss our program and how we approach this issue to solve it.
Good afternoon. Thank you for having us. I appreciate everyone's service here today. I have, well, as of June 18th, I will have two children who graduated from Alachua County Schools. So I appreciate everything that's been done and I commend you all for your service, so, thank you. I wanted to just move through these slides that you all have seen. As Eric mentioned earlier, we all kind of share, I think, very similar definitions. We use the state's definition for small minority women and vendor-owned businesses. What I will point out is Scorpio, when we defined local, we just stayed within Alachua County. So just keep that in mind. We kept those parameters just within our county limits for this particular discussion and for the most part, when we're talking about our community project. This is a little bit of the information that was requested as it relates to local participation and jobs created. So as you can see, FTEs on the Transition School that were supported were 35. And FTEs supported on Howard Bishop, that's currently still under construction, is about 220. And our total spend locally, again, within Alachua County, is up there as well. So that's specific to the trade contracts, too. I just wanted to make that distinction. We were asked to talk a little bit about our philosophy. And I think what's important to know is that it's not necessarily our philosophy so much as it is our culture. It's who we are as a company. It touches every aspect of our business. We take this very seriously as it relates to how we incorporate DVEs into our organization and on our projects. It's something that we evaluate on every single project that we do. It's one of my key roles in the organization. We have a very thorough process that we engage. And on large projects in particular, we are doing vendor diversity information sessions well in advance of when we bid a project. So we target, we have a very deep database already identified of minority subcontractors, women and veteran subcontractors, that we invite to participate in these information sessions. We realize that a lot of times, information is all that's necessary, and early and often. So even during times of COVID, we have been participating in these information sessions virtually. And they've been actually very successful. So we're anxious to continue that because sometimes just traveling can be a barrier. So that's something that we actually learned over there. Our goal is always to achieve a minimum of 30% DVE participation on our projects. And right now, if we looked at just Howard Bishop and the Transition School, combined between small minority women and veteran-owned businesses, we are at 47% participation. So we feel really good about that. And then how do we go about this process? What are we doing on a daily basis? How are we keeping this culture alive at Scorpio? Well, the real heart of it was developed in 2017. And it became a very serious strategy. It's a part of our strategic initiative every year. It's something we evaluate at the very core level of our organization. We have a vendor diversity process, as I mentioned earlier, for every one of our projects that is often launched with those information sessions. And, you know, we are always looking for other ways to reach and identify DVEs to bring into our already existing DVE database internally. Finding them and then communicating on a regular basis is key. We've partnered with three other CM firms here locally over the years. Forsight was our partner when we pursued projects at the University of Florida, as was NewJack, and now currently, we are working with Elevated Design and Michael's here. Creating additional opportunities in our community is, of course, a goal as well. We participate with the Chamber of Commerce and some of their initiatives. We're very active in Bancev. Dominic is serving as the president this year. And actually, tomorrow night, he will be at the graduation for the apprenticeship program, which is one of the ways we're trying to combat the workforce development issue. The kids we can get into the Santa Fe program who then matriculate through, become our next electricians and plumbers, potentially can then run their own businesses. And we can hire them. And now, I'm going to let Mike- And now, I'm gonna let Michael talk a little bit more about some of the barriers that he sees that prevent us from identifying and how we are going to get over that.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Mike Beard, Elevated Design and Construction, thank you all for having, um, having us here today. Um, many of you know that I used to work for the city of Gainesville doing project management and capital improvement projects and things of that nature and decided to go out again and to the, um, into the GC market here in, in Gainesville because I saw that there was a gap and there was an existing history of disparity in all agencies. So we are here just as one group to talk about what we can do as one group, as a school board, but there's city, county, everybody has this issue because it's not just an issue with your organization, it's an, an issue in countywide. So when I came into the, just the industry, again, um, some of the barriers that I did have, as Eric mentioned earlier, was access to capital. Like I had a plan, I saved money and things of that nature. But there's a tremendous amount of money needed if you're gonna operate at this level. The level that we're talking about today, we're not talking about just a lower-tiered level, like you gotta have access to capital to be able to go week to week. And so, access to capital, bonding capacity, if you can't bond it, you can't build it. You can't build it at all, right? And so, not only that, there's a lot of other things that you needed to, to understand as far as your forms and, and things of that nature. But one of the programs that I was a part of, that I, I thought helped just tremendously with my company, was Ms. Kathy Porter's here today. And it was the Mentor Protege Program that was at the University of Florida. And when I first had the opportunity to meet Dominic and some of the other, um, uh, other CM firms. And that program itself has a high level of accountability and it helped me out a lot. And where culture does not exist, policy has to be in place, and right? So you guys here now are discussing what you can do because there's not a culture of inclusivity all throughout the county. You're having to have this discussion because it's not being self-policed. You're having to now just try to set policy to make sure it's, it's there. Well, what was happening there is that a lot of the companies were becoming just used to it and becoming, was becoming a part of who they were. And the reason I am now, you know, partner with Scorpio is because I saw that there was a culture that was there already. And it just wasn't, uh, when I can tell culture is when it goes down to all of your employees and not just the leader talking about what he wants to do because he thinks you wanna hear it. It came down through in regular conversation with the employees, right? And so, those, those things helped me to grow my company. Not only that, just the singular mentorship. So just the singular coffee that, that Scorpio and I might have and I may have coffee with, um, Juan from Forsight, or I may have a conversation with Eric, or I may, whatever it is. It's that singular focus that, that will help, um, these contractors and particularly primes, I look to be primes like myself, I'm also a subcontractor. Those opportunities come, but the culture has to be there. How do we present, how do we create that culture? You reward it. You reward great, uh, participation in the accomplishment of your goals by, by rewarding them in their participation in our projects, by, by, by really recognizing what they've done. So these things are, are strong and were very instrumental in, in my process. And, and that, that Mentor Protege Program was mutually beneficial and it, it helped my company just continue to grow. And we've just kept growing from that and the relationships that we built, the phone calls I can make. It's, it's, it's a really strong program. So, anyway, I just wanted to present that to you guys and thank you so much for having us today. If we have any questions for me, I'll definitely answer them.
Question? Question?
I can answer none.
None, thank you. At this time, I'd like to introduce Mike Walsh with Parish McCall.
Good afternoon, Dr. McNeely, board members, Dr. Simon. I am Mike Walsh with Parish McCall Constructors and I'm happy to be here this afternoon to, uh, discuss this very important topic. The way we've built our business at Parish McCall is by listening intently to our clients and understanding what their goals and aspirations for their project or projects might be and then rolling up our sleeves and turning those goals and aspirations into reality. Uh, we've worked very hard to do that on our current projects, Elementary I and Metcalf Elementary School. And I hope that mindset has been evident to, uh, the school board staff that we've enjoyed working with. As it relates to vendor diversity, uh, I'm a firm believer that, uh, you know, we all love this community that we live in. And in order for our community to be really healthy, it's critical for us to have a vibrant, uh, economy that works for everyone. And in order for that to be the case, we certainly need to have a good diversity in our local economy that benefits everyone. When, uh, you further that, uh, we know that vendor diversity is important to the school board and it's important to every one of our other clients. Therefore, it's doubly important to us at Parish McCall Constructors. So I wanna hit on a couple of things, a few of which have already been, uh, talked about today. Definitions, uh, of, of what these categories, how they're defined. Generally, uh, the state definition, uh, for these designations is what, uh, people go by. But, uh, to Marquesia's point, in practice, we accept any certification that anyone might have and are happy to do that. There are a couple of nuances here, um, that we, uh, try to steer clear of. One is in the, you know, in the definition of a small business. We find that those definitions are, uh, at a federal level and a state level, they're all over the place. And frankly, I don't find any of them that seem to be real relevant to, to what we're all trying to do here. Uh, the federal definition, the Small Business Administration, uh, defines small business as less than $36.5 million in annual revenue. At the state level, the Florida statutes define it as less than 200 employees and less than a $5 million net worth. And I've seen, uh, you know, a, another definition for 2020, less than 50 employees and less than $16.5 million in annual revenue. And I would, I would tell you that any of those definitions apply to just about all or most of the subcontractors that we deal with here in Alachua County on a regular basis. So what are some of the things that we do to promote diversity? Am I supposed to advance this?
Yeah. American hemp.
Oh, okay. All right, sorry about that. Uh, of course, as we're required to do on our projects, we publicly advertise each project and the applicable bid packages. We post our, uh, uh, project opportunities on the UF, uh, and they've, they've changed their name. The Small Business and Supplier Diversity Department has a great website that gets, you know, reaches a lot of companies. We send bid invitations and we don't rely strictly on electronic media to attract vendors to our projects, not just diverse vendors, but all vendors. So we pick up the phone and we, and we reach out to them by the old-fashioned way, by telephone. We have targeted, uh, outreach, uh, opportunities, including open houses at our office. And we have had hosted, uh, uh, dedicated to diverse vendors. We've had, uh, some workshops at our office where we've covered estimating and how, uh, they can better interact with our projects and what we're looking for and how we can help them make the process earlier, easier. As well as some project management workshops where we can help them understand some of the paper flow that's required on these projects, uh, at, really at any, uh, public sector project, there's a lot of paperwork. It's not that easy to, to figure out when you're first getting started. And we've had great success with those and found that they've been well-attended and well-received. Uh, I mentioned our current projects that we are, are now winding down at Elementary I and Metcalf. And you'll see some figures here that we, you know, report to the school board on our, uh, on a monthly basis. But you can see the percentage of the subcontracted dollars to, uh, diverse vendors has been around 20%. The percentage of bid packages awarded has been a little bit above that. We, uh, have achieved over 60% of Alachua County participation on our projects because, uh, like Scorpio, we consider local to be Alachua County. However, if we were to use the definition of less than 150 miles, those percentages would elevate to about 95% because on these two projects, that would represent every single subcontractor with the exception of the two companies that are building the pre-engineered aluminum canopies. And, uh, this is not an exact science, but our tracking shows that, uh, Elementary I and Metcalf have supported local jobs in the number of about 211 on Elementary I and 164 on Metcalf. Very proud of that fact. So I wanna, are there any questions about that? I don't wanna move too fast. If you have a question, please stop me. So let's move on and, and talk about, uh, you know, what, what the challenges are. And we see, you know, one of the big challenges, uh, is the, the current reality locally. There is a very, uh, limited supply of, of diverse vendors here in Alachua County, uh, to draw from to some of these larger projects. Michael, I'm glad you're here and I, I applaud your participation in these projects. I think that's a great start and I, I wish, uh, I hope we can build upon that 'cause I think it's fantastic. It's been mentioned already, the vendor, uh, the Mentor Protege Program that started at, at the University of Florida. Uh, we've been a participant in that for almost 15 years now, since its inception. During that time, uh, I've mentored four smaller firms that are now in the University of Florida Minor Projects Program, which is projects up to $2 million. And they're all doing well. In the last couple of years, I've had the, a good fortune to mentor a couple of local companies that weren't even construction companies. Uh, one was a local coffee company and one is a local catering company. And those experiences were great. You know, I've enjoyed all my, all my mentoring experiences, but to be able to work with some people that do something a little bit different than construction every day, I found very rewarding. And so my point here is that I think the Mentor Protege Program is, uh, very effective. It yields tangible results. And I think we need to explore, you know, expanding it across the community. And what you've seen and heard already is that that's what's happening. Uh, the city of Gainesville has initiated a, uh, Mentor Protege Program since January. Uh, it's already been mentioned, the Chamber's Inclusive Gainesville Initiative, which I think is gonna be great. This is a way for us as a community to get all the entities involved, all work together, and grow local businesses right here. Create business opportunities for minority, uh, vendors and create jobs here that our children can move into after they graduate from school instead of having to move off somewhere else. Uh, so I think, uh, the opportunities are, uh, are great in front of us. We're happy to be part of this conversation. Uh, some of our goals would be to not only grow the, the percentages that you see on our projects, but also even the mix among the categories, um, that make up those percentages. Because I, I think you've seen it in your, your own numbers that were, uh, uh, provided with the agenda the other night. The minority component of these numbers is very small, like 1%. And we've got to do better than that and we can do better than that by helping some of these businesses grow right here at home versus, uh, reaching, you know, outside of the community to Tampa and Jacksonville and Orlando, which gets more difficult and more expensive as those marketplaces get busier. So I think doing it organically, right here as a community, is what makes sense. And we look forward to being part of the solution and, and moving forward. So, can I answer some questions for you?
Any questions? I don't see any. We certainly appreciate your, um, presentation. And, um, for all of the companies that are here, we appreciate, um, your, um, presentation. We will take everything that you've stated seriously. Uh, we look forward to working collaboratively with you. And Mr. Rella, it's on you.
Thank you.
Sure.
All right, thank you again, um, to our construction managers for the programs they've built and, um, coming and sharing those with the board. We felt that was super important. Um, obviously, as a district, our scope is limited with staffing, which you can see the folks behind me spent a lot of time and thought, uh, we thought, felt it was really important to bring them here today. Uh, we did have some just general questions, uh, in, in terms of the board, um, discussion or direction component. So, um, the scoring matrix, um, and we link throughout the slide that Ms. Winn went through. All of the scoring, uh, matrix and the scoring methodology was all linked through there. But in, in typically, at least in recently, um, in our business diversity initiative, we include 10 points specifically for, out of 100, for business diversity. So 10%. So we didn't know if the board had any kind of input. Obviously, we wanna know the direct, the direction from the entire board, if that's something that we need to look at more closely or if it looks like it's in line with the expectations, et cetera.
Any comments?
Yes. Go ahead.
Go ahead, go ahead, Ms. Brown, go ahead.
Okay, uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, as far as the scoring weights, um, to me, if we're really serious about diversity, we say it's currently worth 10 points, I, I, I would say that should be more. Maybe depending on the project, but I would say maybe 20 points. Um, because that has to be, and I think Mr. Beard said it earlier, it has to be rewarded. We want to make sure that we are fair in our process. And I think it's important that with the business diversity, it needs to be worth more money. Because I would, I would say probably, uh, first of all, I just wanna say to all of you all that are here, that presented, thank you so much, even though you may, uh, be, uh, different companies. I like how I heard everybody's trying to work together, so I do appreciate that. But I would say probably about a couple of years ago, um, I started kinda paying attention to facilities, uh, even prior to being on the board. I met with Mr. White and I also met with Ms. Porter, uh, over at the chamber and we were talking about making sure we include minorities when it comes to these projects that are gonna be coming up here, uh, with the school system. And, uh, because we are spending millions and millions of dollars. And I know how I have been successful myself as a, as making sure, uh, I share. You know, especially with minority, having capital, all of that. But to ensure that we really are promoting diversity, we need to give more pointage to, as far as that, as far as the scoring matrix is concerned. And that's the first piece I have, I have a lot more, but I didn't know if you wanna speak to that piece.
Uh, Dr. Simon. Uh, Dr. Simon.
So we, they were actually asking for direct guidance on the ways, and so behind you, you can see all the ways that currently exist. And I think in order to just make sure that our team is doing with the board of life, we really need you to probably dedicate some attention to letting this go along.
Well, we didn't get this in advance. Did we get this in advance?
Yeah.
I don't know.
It was in the, it was in the package.
And then, and then one, one thing I wanted to mention that Suzanne, that Suzanne brought up, which is a great idea, is obviously it's kind of like a zero sum game. If there's, if we're going to put additional point weight toward the business diversity, it's going to have to come from somewhere. So we didn't, I mean, it's kind of yet to look at the scoring holistically. So if you want us to put, you know, let's just say 20 points into diversity instead of 10, is there another area that's maybe less important than diversity that we need to kind of shift the weights between? If that makes sense?
For, is that okay? I, for me, the focus, because I have asked about this as well for a number of years. I hate that it sounds like a zero sum game, but you do have to try to balance the schedule out. So for me, I think the qualifications of someone, you know, they're going to have that. For me, I'm thinking even separating the diversity and the local component of it. I think if you put both of those things in there, you have local and diversity kind of competing against each other. So we're saying, oh, we want folks to be in our local community, which we do want the, the money to be spent in our community. But at the same time, if we look at who's, who's giving presentations to us today. And we'll have the same players. If we stay in Alachua County, we'll have the same players and there won't be any room for a minority contractor, someone that looks like me that may be within 150, 200 miles of our organization to come in and compete. And that person will, if they come in and they compete and they're awarded something successfully, it could be that they're hiring people and they're giving capacity and helping to build up the capacity. So I think you have your local and your minority kind of competing against each other if they stay in the same bracket there, in the same bucket, the 10-point bucket.
Ms. Certain, we, we currently don't have anything in our scoring rubric for local.
Okay.
It's, it's only for the small women, minority, and veteran business.
And our policy, I thought I read something that local, if there was, in 60, I didn't bring my, all my books in because I had another book in here, but, but I think the, I'm, I'm with Ms. McGraw in giving more points to that. And but where do we take it from and shaving it from? I don't know if you take five from past experience in similar projects.
Yeah.
Or project costs, project and total cost control, we bring it down. Some says it's the highest one, we bring it down to 25 and we put 15 in there. But I think my other concern is some type of training or some type of rubric and how you would award the points. Because I had that question and if someone submits a certificate, do you give them all the points for that particular bucket? I was on the Audit and Finance Committee. I had this question. You remember that, Alex? I'm saying, so if we got 10 points in that bucket and someone submits a certificate, does everybody in, whoever submitted a certificate for being a minority, do they get the 10 points for that? That's, that's rhetorical. I'm asking because I don't know, because it seems that. Is that how it's scored now? If, if, in this 10-point bucket, if we got three people that respond and everyone submits a valid certificate, will every person that's scoring give them 10 points? Or will somebody say, I'll give you five, I'll give you seven, I'll give you 10?
So it's done really on an individual basis in terms of the committee member that's doing the scoring and then their particular evaluation of the criteria. So, you know, in, in the case of the Westwood.
No, no, in the, in the, in the case of any minority certificate I'm asking. Because I had this question when I did the Audit and Finance thing. That's what I, because, and that was, we had one vendor who didn't submit it at all. And then we had two of the accounting firms that did submit a minority, one, I think, did submit one. And that was a question that I had then. So I'm just asking that question in general, irregardless of what project it is.
When, when we're looking as a committee at the category of small women, minority, veteran business enterprises, we're looking at the programs that the companies have in place and we're looking at past percentages of participation on other projects that they participated in. We're not getting into the weeds with the actual certifications. Does that answer your question?
Sort of, kind of sort of. Kind, I mean, because, sort of, I don't know, sort of. So you're saying it's still variable in the sense that?
Even if we give it more.
Right. So let, let me take another crack at that. So in the, the construction realm, obviously, it really depends on their programs, not just their programs, but what their actual results are. For the example of the RFP for audit services, and I didn't, I don't remember exactly how it was worded, but you get additional points if you're a diverse business. To me, that's either a yes or no question, if you get the points or you don't. Whereas this is much more subjective in terms of programming, outreach. It's not a yes or no. It's a grading system, just like a teacher would, you know, I would write an essay and Suzanne would write one. We give it to Dr. McNeely. We're going to get different grades, most likely.
I'm going to get a better grade, I think.
Not sure about that. But with the, with the RFPs that relate to construction, I mean, there's subjectivity within it. It's an evaluation by an individual, whereas the one you're referring to is, are you a diverse business or not? So it's kind of like a yes or no.
And so this is the memorandum that goes to the selection, the selection committee members. And this is the description of each of the categories. And under the number five, the firm should explain their participation, if any. Give details of the level of participation in previous projects and the programs that they have in place. So that's, that's what the score is, is based upon. And as I mentioned previously when I was, was giving the slides that, that I presented, each one of the committee members look at all of these. They spend hours looking at these submittals, these submissions. They do their own independent scoring. And then when we get together, we have a, we basically, instead of doing a total score where you could have a real weighting issue, a skewing of the scores, we simply have everyone rank from one to eight, in the instance of Westwood. And then we weight those rankings. You know, so we statistically, no one can skew the scores by using total scores.
I was going to ask, what's the composition of your selection committee? Is it all people from CIVIA or you have staff? How, how does that, how do you make that up?
The superintendent is, is the person that approves the committee.
Okay.
And we have, I'm going to use the example of Westwood. We have Mr. Rella from, we have someone from Finance, in this instance is Mr. Rella. In the past, it has been Mr. Hackett. We always have the principal of the schools. We have Mr. Bernie and then we have myself. And we have two of our, of my project coordinators, Richard Rucker and Dennis Griffith on this committee. The committees.
So, so the, so the composition of the committee is the same for all of the, or because to me?
Each one of the committees has been.
It's weighted differently then?
Each one of the committees is, has varied. We've had somebody from Finance, we've had the principal. And then we've had, in, in past committees, we've had Mr. White, we've had myself, we've had various members. And the committee is approved by the superintendent. Thank you.
Can I ask something?
Uh, Dr. Paulson.
All right. Now, are they competing a certain amount, a certain amount of, 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 in other words, are they competing against each other? Are they non-diverse and diverse? And what, and the second question is, why doesn't he have a tie? How do you solve a tie?
We, I, I've, I give the committee direction on having no ties. We, we basically, we have, our committee members are given the instruction to have no ties. So we can have, and if we do have a tie, we did have a number, how many did we have, like three number twos or something? When we had our shortlist and we had multiple, you know, with the same scoring, we had our cutoff, do you have the Westwood sheet? I can use that as an example. I mean, it'll be easier to show the example. So committee members are given the instructions in their scoring to not have any ties.
That's something new in this district. Because about five years ago, I, I wasn't even about a tie.
And so this is what our.
Good. I mean, I'm just, that's why I asked the question.
This is what our shortlist, composite shortlist score sheet looked like. So we have an overall ranking of, we had one number one, one number two, and two number threes, three number fours, and one number five. So the committee decided to have the cutoff be at the overall ranking of a three. So the firms that we're interviewing are the four that you see highlighted in yellow. But if you, if you look over at the, over at the individual committee member scores, there are no ties.
So if you don't, so, all right, that answers the tie situation. But if you are, if whatever the rankings are and you make the selection, then if something should happen at the construction site, say like, for example, like over at Idlewild and didn't work out with whatever company, and so do you then select? You have to do the rebidding all over again or do, or do you go to the next construction manager group?
This is the score sheet for the shortlisting. So the next phase after this is to go into interviews. So these four companies are scheduled for interviews on May 19th. They all have a scheduled time that they'll come in and we'll have another individual scoring and composite ranking. And those rankings have come to you, the board, previously and they're ranked one, two, and three. So if we have, in the case of our, we had this, this situation happen with our architect at Idlewild.
Oh, okay.
Uh, we originally had a company that was out of Tallahassee that did not work out. And so they were ranked number one and we went to our number two ranked firm, which was Rhodes Brito.
Thank you.
So that, that would be the same instance with the CMs.
Okay. If there are no more questions for that particular question? Oh, all right.
Right.
Go ahead, Ms. Rella.
The, we're supposed to be having some discussion amongst us about the scoring rubric, if we'd like to. And unfortunately, I left my notes in the car, some notes that I had.
They're good.
When I came. And so what I was going to suggest, and I'll just, I can send them to Superintendent Simon and she can share them with the group and we can come back again, I guess, since we, we've been, this has been prolonged, you know, I mean, those are just my notes. I have my little book in the car as well and some things that I just had. I mean, but a lot of what I'd like to do, we can't do because we don't have a disparity study. So we can't have those metrics. I'm still waiting on, hoping that comes through. But the concern that I had there, the other thing I was just wondering is just, well, as I said, the, I think we've got some competing interest there and I would like to adjust a couple of the buckets so that we could, in essence, put a little bit more on the diversity type thing. And then possibly having, as I said, like, to me, the scoring, just because it's so variable. But I guess we have the weighting there to try to, to get past that, so.
But I, Madam Chair.
I'm listening, Ms. McGraw.
Looking at my presentation, the thing was asked about, I looked at the business diversities currently worth 10 points out of a total of 100. I did not look at the total, but I know because the scarcity of minority and things that has been an issue in the past, that needs a more of a focus. I'm not, I know, like you say, like you certainly say, you may take away five, but I think it needs to be more. As far as me giving you direction, as a board member, I need to look at it, maybe it's 20, you know, I would say 20 points. And so we'll just have to look. And this is a workshop, so we may not solve it all today. But I do think we need to give more preference to that, to that because we know, we don't have a lot of minorities, you know, businesses in this area. But everybody's been talking about it. We have to grow our own. And so that means we start, because we are the hub. That means we start with our students, who could be, become our partners as far as them going out and being with these companies and learning the different size of facilities, construction. That's how we create a workforce, you know. But that is why, that needs to be, that's important to me, that we make sure we give more emphasis of that. You can take from something else. But I think as we do better, our community does better. So that's why that particular piece is important to me.
One other thing, bear with me, I'm confused with. What's the weight, first of all, what's it worth, the bid price? And how do we get in with the minority and the diversity? You have four companies and they all give a bid price, right?
So this is, this example that we have with Westwood is a construction manager at risk. It falls under CCNA and it's not necessarily based on price. It's based on qualification, quality.
Yeah, but why doesn't it have something that is based on price? And the company, and then you, which, how do you get the diversity then and bring it in place?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
All right, you got a company, one company might have a lot more diversity in their company than the other company, but they're cheaper. How, you have a, I'm just, I mean, I don't know.
So price doesn't come into, price doesn't come into factor with this. We're selecting the most qualified firm that can, that can execute the project.
Okay.
Not price. Price comes when we bring back the GME. It's kind of like, and it's a really poor example, but like a brain surgeon. Like you don't, you don't get a brain surgeon based on price, right? I mean, you go based on the quality because it's really important.
That's fine. I just.
Similar.
I said I might be confused.
Right.
The, the other piece of, of the puzzle is with the construction management firms that are selected. We're not just looking at their particular company. The reason we're looking at their past percentages and their, their programs and their dedication to this effort is because a lot of the percentages come from the subcontractors and the subs of the subs that they hire. And that's going to be subsequent to the selection of, of the contract, the, the construction management company.
Then you're going by the points? You're going by the points? You're putting a weight on each thing?
We're putting a, a weight.
I mean, yeah, I mean.
We're putting a weight on their past performance and their program.
And they come up with, with a score, correct?
Yes.
And you pick the one with the highest score?
Yes.
Okay. I got you.
So I, I guess my question is, we have a, a pretty big project coming up that we're going to be selecting a CM for on the 19th. And then subsequently, we'll be, we'll be providing the recommendation for the ranking to you as a board after that. Do you want me to change the weighting of the categories for that, for those interviews coming up on the 19th for Westwood?
I don't think, that's next week, right?
I don't, I don't think, I don't think it's fair to change it in the middle of, the midstream. I don't think that's the right thing to do. If folks have come and they presented based on what the letter that you sent.
Okay.
I, I think, anything after that, I just, I don't think mid-process, that's the, I don't think that's fair. I mean, you know what I'm saying, to change the rules in midstream of, of this particular project.
Okay.
Process. That's just my view. I don't know about my colleagues here. But we're in the process, in the middle of doing that Westwood thing and the, the contractors, the businesses submitted based on what they, you know.
I think we need to have further discussions, but not to disrupt what we have in place for the people for next week.
Okay, great.
Part I feel more comfortable with, I know.
We can also take it off the table and look at when the individual leaders are looking on, if we can come up with some sales to help make it a more robust rubric as well, if we're looking to keep that.
Yeah, because my, Madam Chair, my thing would be if we move forward like we, we are. Because my, Madam Chair, my thing would be, if we move forward like we, we are, are doing now with the Westwood project, where would be another opportunity, as far as projects is concerned for? They got plenty. It wouldn't be twenty-five, twenty-six, it would be prior to that. That's, that's what I'm trying to get at.
Yeah, I mean, we have, OQ-
OQ's gonna be a hard bid, so that's gonna be based on dollars, the low bid, the lowest qualified bid.
And then we've got two other projects that we have looking on, OQ. People will be revisiting us quite a bit.
Okay.
And we're future, so I think it's, this is a good opportunity to, to kind of go back with the rubric. Because you all can opt in perhaps.
Okay, yeah.
We just wanted to get in.
Right. Yeah, can I, one more thing, so I make sure I understand? So OQ's gonna be dollars, but you could have a company that's not really very diverse, and they're hiring.
That's, that's correct.
Okay. I just trying to understand, I'm not trying to make a mistake.
Typically, a, a hard bid is, is-
All right, I got it.
The lowest, um, the lowest amount, the lowest amount with a qualified bidder.
Okay.
Another question, or just, um, general discussion for the board, is this small versus local definition. Um, I think every, um, every one of the presentations kind of touched on that, but I know the board has the feedback on, you know, when we say local, do we mean Latshaw County business? Or is it fifty miles, um, and small? Is it worth putting a real specific definition? And I would say, you know, for a lot of these items, obviously, we're not making, we're not, there's no board action, it's a workshop. So we have to understand that, but we just wanted to get some general feedback. Like Dr. Simon said, we'll come back at some point and revisit it, but this is the kind of stuff that the staff needs to get a bit of direction.
And you, well, and we need some direction from you guys. Would, would have put a undue hardship on getting quality work, too. I mean, I mean, I'm not saying that's a problem, but stuff like that, you figure out what, you know, if, what you're doing to the companies that you think you're gonna be serving, it's still, I mean, I don't mean it has to be that, but I think it should be thought, given that.
I think here what we're, we're probably more meeting the dynamics on, this is a philosophical discussion of the tax care dollars. Do you want, you know, what is the priority when things are starting to be looked at? Any events that are focused on small and minority businesses, and that takes the tax care dollars out of the taxpaying community, where does the board stand, or does the board prefer to keep tax care dollars in? Obviously, this is going to slide. We, we just really need to know what the direction the board would like to go, because that will help shape, that'll shape the rubric, I think.
Right, yeah. So, since we, this is still all flux, and we haven't awarded anything.
Mm-hmm.
My, and, and this regard, your point is, well, taken about when we'll, when we will do another large project, and it may be a couple of years. And the minority piece is important to me. I, I think that's important, and I, and I would say, and I think, we, this organization was part of the Friendship Seven disparity study, along with the city and all that. So everybody keeps talking about equity and inclusion and diversity, and recognizing and admitting and saying we have this. So if we don't work towards, so why don't we just go ahead and change it now? And just say, we want the diversity part to be the, um, that point structure in the rubric to change, to be, to have more of an emphasis on that. Do we put twenty points in that? And if, local dollars, you want them to stand in, in the community? It, like I said, that, that is a competing thing. So I, I'm, I'm open to us having, um, um, discussion about that, and we getting more feedback on that. But at the same time, if we want there to be minority participation in, in that, it's, I don't want the two to, to compete against each other. That's, and I don't know how to, you know, I didn't come today with, with a solution to how we don't have them competing against each other. But like I said, everybody's talking about saying they're gonna do something, and I've been asking for, for inclusion numbers for all y'all that are here. I just want to state on the record, as it, as, as been said, I've been asking for numbers for two years, and ever since the tax passed. I said, Ben, I want us to make sure we're tracking this so that we can see inclusion to our staff. I, I've been making that request, so.
Mrs. McGraw?
Yeah, and I was gonna say, as far as small and local business definition, that if anyone's gonna receive a contract, they have to have a local establishment, probably, you know, if they have an office here for the last two or three years, uh, like, they are partnering, um, and they may be out of other, but they still have a local presence. So I don't think we need to just say, oh, it's local, and then think, but I still think we're being responsible. If that person has done business here, and they've performed, and they are working, uh, with some of our vendors, our partners we have now, they have a local presence, not just a P.O. box, but if they have an office, and they've been established, I think that's good within a hundred and fifty or two hundred mile radius. I think you're still being responsible. Because all, when, when we're talking about this, you're talking about, we're spending eighty-three million, and, and most of your small minority, they can't, they can't get these bigger projects. But the partnership that just gives them a little fifteen or twenty percent, whatever their numbers ought to work out, they have an opportunity, and they have an opportunity to grow. And so my definition would be the local establishment, land office, for at least with a, with an employee. With, with an employee who actually work, work at that, if that's the better direction for you, who actually works at that office.
All right, and then I think the, the next one we touched on quite a bit, there's kind of a little bit of a paradox between having diverse business versus local business. There are school boards and other organizations that have board policies that speak directly at how much every construction contract, how much has to be, um, diverse businesses. And that, and that's great for diversity, but I think what you see at least locally, and I think they all touched on it in some way, shape, form, is the labor market here, particularly subcontractors, don't exist in the, in, in to the extent we want it to, we're to grow. But if we do go with a policy or something of that nature, there's a natural tendency for, in order for contractors to meet that, um, that percentage, they're gonna have to go outside of Latshaw County, they're gonna have to go Orlando County. And that's, with, you think, one, bring the tax dollars out of our county, which is, which is first we can hear. But it also gets to drive the price, and I think that's kind of the question with the board. Is it better to kind of grow it organically, put dollars into these businesses, or have a policy that requires, that could potentially require us to go outside of this?
I think it'd be interesting to know what the workforce puts, how strong is our workforce? Because we always change it, not saying we're gonna do it, but we need, I, I need more figures, but, you know, how strong is our workforce right now in this county compared to where it is if you extended it? I mean, doesn't mean I'm making a decision, I'm just trying to get some, some facts to make a decision with. Does that make sense?
Sure, and that's, I mean, I think that's exactly what the disparity study would show us.
All right.
And, and Madam Chair, um, Mr. Rella, when it comes to small, I mean, diverse business versus local business, I don't think it's a versus, I think it's both. I think they work hand in hand. It's just that when you have the job site, it, it looks like the community, you know, it's diverse. Um, but I think they go hand in hand. I don't think they should reverse each other. Um, I, I mean, that, that, you know, because on your workforce, they're gonna have, it's like, you, and you're already kind of doing it, but what I see here, it's just, it's small, but now we gotta work to a groin, you know? Uh, but you're already here with what Scorpio and, uh, M.M. Parrish and, you know, and C.T.P.I. have just, um, talked about. But I don't think it's both, I think they go hand in hand, uh, with each other. Because they're gonna make sure the workforce, when I go out, I guess, to physically see, is a business that's diverse, there's minorities working, um, but I don't think it's, it, it should be local. And then we just define to me what local means. So I think they go hand in hand, but not versus each, each other.
I think what my call to them, um, this is a lot. Uh, I think what my call is that we will work with, um, within our team as well, with the contractors that we have, our relationships. We try to kind of draft, um, like, the first shot at what these things were hearing from the board. Because, uh, quite honestly, we can't vote in this, or in this workshop, so we will need a vote. Um, so I think we can kind of, you know, do a first draft, we'll have that brought to all. We really, there's so much attached to this financially, and soul to the community, the whole component. We really probably need a, a board vote to guide this decision.
And we need more information.
Well, I think there's some information that we can provide, and I think there's, I mean, from what, as far as the workforce, it appears that there is a discussion that there is a concern of workforce availability and a reason. Um, but we can look at it, if any more data to let, or guide you all. But at some point, the board needs to vote.
Dr. Simon, we've had a lot of discussion, um, on this and the previous workshop earlier. Um, and I failed to look over to my left to see if we had any citizens. No one reminded me of that. And, um, I, I do apologize, always stop me if you have citizens. What about earlier? Okay.
Well, Madam, Madam Chair, since I know we've had a long discussion, and they did ask for, and this is a workshop, uh, strategy development, overcome identified barriers, I can just give my eighth list that will help you, but I need to make a copy of it, because I have some notes on it, and that can help you as you, as you go. I know when you're trying to go through this, if I, if it's, it's long, um, I can give it to you in writing at where you have it.
All right, I think that wraps up. If there's no, if there's no more questions?
Get out while you can.
I, I, I would just like to emphasize, um, something that Mr. Beard touched on.
Can you speak a little louder?
I would like to emphasize something that Mr. Beard touched on, which is, uh, culture versus policy. And I feel like with the changing, with the addition, previous to, uh, our first projects, uh, that we have with the sales tax, we did not have a category to even evaluate, uh, small minority women in veteran-owned businesses. And I feel like the addition of adding that to our, our grading rubric for our, for our review committee sent the message that this is something that the, at Latshaw County Public Schools, the school, school board cares about. And hence, that led to, uh, CMs that we, that we're working with that care about this issue of workforce diversity. And they have a culture of addressing workforce diversity. I think this, I think in terms of short term and long term, I think what you'll make decisions on at a board meeting is a short-term solution. But in the long term, what I keep hearing over and over again is we need to build our local diverse workforce. And how do we do that, and how do we collaborate with community partners that, that were listed previously? The University of Florida, Santa Fe, the Chamber of Commerce, the county, the cities. How do we work together with our village to, to build this, uh, local diverse workforce? So that's, that's where my heart is, and that's where I feel like we need to look long-term with, with the vision of this. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Rella. I'm going to turn this chair over to our vice chair. I do have an appointment, and you all will probably be here, um, and I'll come back. But I, I do have to, uh, move out now, and I know it's time for our title, and I hate that I'm gonna miss a portion of it, but I will try my best to be back.
Madam Chair, let's recess.
Let's recess, well, yes, thank you.
Go ahead and recess.
We'll recess for-
Fifteen minutes.
Fifteen minutes before, um, Mrs. Fortner. Fifteen minutes before, um, Mrs. Fortner.
Ready? So we're back in session now, um, of our Wednesday, May fifth workshop after a fifteen minute recess. And unfortunately, due, due to some scheduling conflicts and our meeting ran long, the first part of our workshop, we're going to, um, reschedule items D, the federal programs review, the Title I and Title II and Title IV grant and the budget update. Those items will be covered on a workshop to be rescheduled and that meeting, future meeting, will be publicly noticed, um, in the Gainesville Sun and the case out in front of our building here at six twenty East University Avenue, as well as on our website. I don't have a date, but it will be, those items will be covered in a future meeting. So, since, um, we had some scheduling conflicts with, um, two other board members. So at this time, I'm going to thank you all for joining us for the first part of our workshop, and I'm going to adjourn this meeting until further notice. Thank you.